You didn't say no, how about no?
I'm gonna give you this one.
Okay, that's for the...
That's for the can.
Okay. Can this just be here, or do I have to wear it?
It is fine.
Okay.
There we go.
How's that?
Very good.
Wow. Alright. I've never been a school moderator, I'm a little nervous. Thank you very much for your confidence. So, just, most of us have been to town meetings before, so we won't spend a lot of time on the warm-up. But just remind you, we are going to use Robert's Rules. Remind you to speak to the issue, rather than to each other. Direct your comments to the moderator. And even if it's a question for someone in the room, direct the question to the moderator, and then we'll call on somebody who can answer it. Anybody here who's not a Middlesex voter? Oh, and two little ones, yes, alright. Just a reminder that if you're not a Middlesex voter, you can't vote. Feel free to ask questions at any point. Just raise your hand. This is your meeting. So, if there's a question about process, feel free to raise that. We are only going to address warranted articles. There are two articles. Hopefully you know where they are. Have they been printed out? Okay, great. Yes. And we will be voting either by voice or by a show of hands. If at any point you wish that we could vote in credit and want a paper ballot, you can call for one of those as well. That's another option. Okay. So, Article 1. It's really long. Article 1: Shall the voters of the Middlesex District approve the grant of an option agreement from the Middlesex School District to the Town of Middlesex? Which gives the Town of V, which I think is supposed to be the Town of Middlesex. Yes, okay. The right to purchase the real estate upon which the Romney Elementary School is currently located from the Middlesex School District, or its successor in interest. For the purchase price of $1 in the event the property is no longer used for educational purposes. That's the article. Is there a motion?
I'll move the article.
Peterhood moves, is there a second? Miranda Crowell?
Second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on Article 1? Yes.
Is that in one of these two packages?
The article?
Yeah.
No, it's not. Those two are the sort of addenda things. Do we have the actual warning printed? We think maybe we don't, yeah.
It would've been nice to have, right?
Yes, it would've been nice to have, yes. It was on the town website. And if at any point you'd like me to read it or parts of it again, I'm sorry. Unless we have...
Is there an optional agreement that's right here?
The option agreement, but not the article itself.
Do you want me to...
Is it on the board?
I can go make copies.
I can go read it, I can go get it right now.
Because this talks, the easement talks about $10, and that talks about $1.
This is different. This is the purchase of the building. The easement is having a property right for access to the property, even despite purchase.
So, would you like a copy of the article itself?
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get one from the Blue Room, just run with some copies. How many people want copies? Like, do we need one for everybody? Just so maybe a dozen? And Chris is the guy with the answers, by the way. So, all of these questions that we're going to be raising, Chris is likely the school board member. Or do we have other school board members present? Okay.
I'll send them back.
Hey! There's a hero. Thank you. So, how about those gardens?
How about those buds?
How about those buds? It's like the worst. It's not the worst. I just mowed my windows. And all the rain, which has ruined my basil so far. I have to replant woodchucks and my peas.
Can you put this to music?
Can I put this to music? Yeah.
The rain has ruined my basil and woodchucks and the peas.
Shouldn't be something that rhymes with that, too?
Please.
Just, anecdotally, I didn't realize that we even still had town school meetings here. We haven't had a school meeting in Middlesex since the 90s. And that's because we voted to vote on our budget by Australian ballot. But what we didn't vote was to vote our government, any other public issues, public issues, by Australian ballot. So, we're still voting on any public issues that have to do with the school in the Florida format for another two days.
We also vote for school officers.
Say that. And we vote for school officers by Australian ballot, yeah. So, this is the format we have for governance issues and things like land. You hear? Alright, great. Alright, so we're in discussion of Article 1. Are there questions, comments, clarifications? Or would people just like to hear Chris explain Article 1 a little bit? Some nodding of heads. So, Chris, maybe come on up, use the microphone. And I'll still be moderator, okay?
Take over.
Yeah.
So, Article 1 has come about because, as most of you know, I think, we are being merged. And as part of the merger, which will take effect on July 1 in a couple of days, all of the property, including Romney School and Romney School Land, will be transferred to this new district, this new entity. And as part of the default articles, there is a provision that allows, that says if the new district is no longer using the school for school purposes, that it is offered for sale back to the town for $1. So, this article basically mirrors that default article. And the reason that the Board put forward this article for the town to vote on is because default articles can be amended by the new Board. And so, this is a method of ensuring that if Romney School is no longer being used as a school, that the town has first right of purchase once the school use is done. So, basically mirrors the default article, but it is, I think, greater protection because this can't be amended by the new Board.
It could be amended by this group.
It could be, right. It could be amended by this group, by the town. And it's an option. Town doesn't have to exercise the option, but it's an option. And so, that was the purpose of Article 1. And, yeah?
I do have one question. I thought the rec field, the tennis court and the baseball field, soccer field, that was all separate from the school, is that...
It is. It has nothing to do with those pieces of property or town property. And it's like school building and the school, the town, the school property. Any other questions?
Does school property encompass the forest also? Do the trails and things behind the mini soccer field? Where does the property encompass?
Whenever the boundaries are. I mean, I know them specifically, but it's about a 10-acre area, I think. Peter said, you said no?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about a 10-acre piece of land. So, anything that is currently owned by the Middlesex School District is being transferred over to the Washington Central Unified Union School District.
So, that would be playground and maybe the parking lot?
It's everything. It's a, it just, whatever is the school property gets transferred over. John?
Should the phrase "and buildings" be added to Article 1? Because it talks about the real estate. And the next one, Article 2, talks about the real estate and buildings.
You know, I think the real estate would include the building. So, maybe if there's a motion to amend the article, I'd certainly entertain that. Oh, sorry, so sorry. The moderator would entertain that.
Such a little job.
Just like a sister.
Would you like to make that motion, John?
Yes, I'll make a motion to first amend, what I'm looking at says Town of V in one place, so to replace V with Middlesex. And also to add "and buildings" after the phrase "real estate."
Okay. So, the motion is to replace the words Town of V, as I read earlier, with Town of Middlesex, because that was just mistaken. The right to purchase the real estate upon which Romney Elementary School is currently located. What you want to say is to purchase the real estate and buildings?
Yes.
Upon which Romney Elementary School is currently located. Is there a second to that amendment? Second? Yeah, can you say your name? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to alter the wording, to add the word Middlesex instead of V, and to add the words "and buildings" to "real estate." Any discussion on that amendment? Yes.
You go lead, my name. So, we're amending the, proposes to amend the option agreement?
No, the article. Yes. Do we have extra copies of the article?
Because the option agreement does refer to Middlesex. Thank you.
John Hamilton Smith. In a spirit of friendly amendment to the amendment, if the proposed amendment is interested...
Available?
Maybe we could say, "the real estate, comma, including the buildings." It doesn't matter.
The real estate, comma, including the buildings upon which... We've got a couple of English teachers over here. What do you want?
Just something that makes sense for the whole sentence, whatever that is. Sorry, that's me.
Other question?
Yeah, just a second, I have to go back here first.
The point is to have Article 1 and Article 2 mirror the same thing as far as real estate and buildings. I think that's the gist of the amendment.
Yep. If somebody wants to suggest wording, yes. And then, yeah, here.
Does amending the article interfere with the warning and therefore get us into trouble down the road?
I think if this body approves the amendment, I think that we're okay. Unless any lawyers want to agree with it, disagree with it on that. I think this is a, this is a town meeting, and we can amend the wording. It's one of the advantages. Peter, did you have a suggestion?
I heard. So, my question is, what about the playground? That's not a building.
Real estate and buildings. So, it would add "and buildings."
Playground and equipment. Perhaps improvements?
Does playground equipment count as buildings?
It's not a building.
Then, dinner?
Playground itself is, but not the equipment. The equipment, I mean, I think the equipment's part of the...
I think the copy's more...
Is that a...
You need it. Does anyone have a copy of the wording I can write off?
Who made the copies of the...
Brian. There's Nora over here, sir.
Okay. So, are there real estate attorneys in the room who would like to weigh in on this question of the wording that we're amending?
Hello, mister.
Yeah, mister, sure, go for it.
So, the real estate...
Sorry, your name?
Amy Whitehorn. Real estate, real property, the buildings, and site improvements. That would be the language we use in Listron.
Okay, so is that an suggestion that you'd like to make?
Sure.
Let me just get a pen.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. So, real estate, buildings, and site improvements?
Site.
Of site. So, a swing set is a site improvement?
Real estate, buildings...
And site improvements.
Are you sure that would include the playground equipment?
I would include things like a parking lot or a driveway or a fire line, but I don't think it would include the...
Is that a question?
Yeah, please, for something, thank you.
So, site improvements generally, from a lister perspective, include curb cuts, driveways, water, sewers, stuffy, and landscaping. It's everything around on the property, fencing, etc. We could specify what those improvements are, but we typically don't.
So, you feel comfortable as a lister that playground equipment on a school, playground would be included in the site improvements?
Would be a site improvement. However, I'm not the only one of the three of us, and if there's a concern to add equipment on the property, I would support it.
John?
Normally, if it's a permanent structure in the ground, it becomes part of the real estate. If it was a slide that wasn't mounted to concrete in the ground, then they could take that. But if it's permanent structure in the ground, which I think everything out there is, then it becomes part of the property.
I think, right, it's something about it becomes a fixture to the real estate. And so, maybe just add the word fixtures in any pictures.
Chris is suggesting that we add the word fixtures. Okay. Real estate, buildings, fixtures, and site improvement. So, this was a little bit of a consensus process, but with your permission, we are now discussing an amendment that adds the words Town of Middlesex. And this is in the third line of the line. And the right to purchase the real estate, buildings, fixtures, and site improvements upon which the Romney Elementary School is currently located.
Susan, just for the record, who made that motion?
It was kind of a group process. Would somebody like to move that?
I will move for that exact wording. I have a motion as a...
Thanks, Kyle.
And I'll also just state for the notes that the understanding is that that's consistent with what was intended in the wording.
Okay. Is there a second for this amendment? Name? Sorry, who's the second?
Nancy Riley.
Nancy Riley. I think there was maybe a light that just went off because of a timer or something?
You have to move.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just gotta do this and... Come on. I would like to see better than I can see right now. Could somebody bring in a six-year-old to run back and forth, please? These lights on?
Where the switch? Where the switch?
We need to have more vibrant meetings to keep our lights on. Thank you! Takes a village. Definitely takes a child. Alright, great. So, we are now discussing the amendment. And I think I just read it. Are there any questions or further discussion on the amendment? Or would we like to vote on the amendment? Mary?
Does that mean that if there's a leak in the ceiling in the building, that it's not the manager, John, or the meeting in Washington Central to take care of?
Correct.
Mary, could I ask if there's a leak in the ceiling? Is it now?
The new unified district is going to own the building, and they're going to maintain it.
Which is not what we're voting on right now. That's, we are being forced. That's being forced. What we're voting on is this amendment.
Well, yeah, it's everything that responsibility goes over to the new...
The block plowing?
Everything, everything big data.
Is there a building?
Yeah.
But that's, just to be clear, that's not what we're voting on. We didn't, we aren't voting on that. Any other discussion on the amendment? Alright, if we're all clear on the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Amendment passes. So, we have an amended Article 1. Is there further discussion on Article 1? Yeah?
So, Chris, you said, summarizing in a nutshell, if the building was no longer used as a school, but I think the language says it's no longer to be used for educational purposes. So, what could that mean? Is that, is that so vague? I mean, no longer used as a school is a very specific thing. But for educational purposes, it could be a, you know, a retreat house here or a yoga studio or, I don't know.
You know, John, I think the educational purpose means educating students in consistent with the charge of the new, of the new entity, the new supervisor, United District, Union District. And, you know, to, I think they'd be in a lot of trouble if it could be done, let's say, yoga studio or something along those lines. I don't think that that would be educational purposes consistent with what the mission is.
Would you say the state wanted to...
It wouldn't be the state. It wouldn't be, it's just a new union. It wouldn't be the state, although...
The Union District signed off on an idea to establish, after the dissolution of Romney School, to have a regional educational research center for public education in the law.
I don't know. I just, I just... That could be, that could fall within educational purposes. I agree on that, disagree with you. So, that would be, could potentially be an educational purpose.
Has to be a nonprofit, I guess?
Not necessarily. I don't think. You know, I think the, I think this article is if schools are closed, essentially. If the school, well, if the new entity, if new union does not need the school anymore, is not using it for those purposes for educating students, and it's going to be closed, then towns get first steps. Is what the default article says. And we're trying to ensure that that happens without being modified. Michael?
Two things occur to me. One is, it seems like this new district could say Romney is no longer a school. But then, if this educational purpose continues, we really don't have this option, right? I mean, that's the kind of way you're bringing up, John, right?
Well, there's a real-world example, too.
So, there is rumblings in another community outside of us that...
Oh, thanks. Yes, say your name, and if you could stand up, that would be great. Can you stand up?
Sure. So, in another community, they're just talking about closing one of their elementary schools, not in our district, but using that building as some purpose of a central office. So, we should think about things like that potentially happening here as a new building.
So, if someone wants...
Marilyn, are you suggesting another amendment?
I am, just wondering if you'd like to ask. I'll suggest a amendment.
What's that?
I'll suggest it in a minute.
Okay.
How about we change that the amendment property is no longer used for public education of students?
It's still used for, isn't it?
For public education of students.
So, are that a...
Publicly say to use, has, for a school as we know it. Or something along those lines.
That's specific. Sarah's amendment is specific.
Public education still be, end up being the district coming in and using their resources for the public education of students in Central Park?
Maybe more, public education of direct teaching students as opposed to the more 30,000-foot view that you're talking about, John, of saying, well, we can use it for educational purposes, and that would then derivatively be used for educating students. So, direct teaching of students.
So, the proposed amendment, I think, that I'm hearing from Chris?
Chris Sarah.
Chris Sarah, exactly. The problem here, people. Is the event the property is no longer used for direct education of students?
How about providing direct educational teaching services to students?
Public education.
Direct public educational teaching services to students. We need to be careful, because in the educational direct instruction, you work through a different classroom activity. So, I wouldn't choose that phrase personally. Think differently.
Sarah, where are we in, you're providing public educational...
Chris's motion is direct public educational teaching services to students. I believe, is that right, Chris? Is that, should I say that correctly? Emily said something, I couldn't hear what she said else.
I was saying the phrase "direct instruction" means a certain kind of classroom activity or educational activity to educators. So, I would be careful, let me do that.
So, do you think providing public educational teaching services to students?
Emily, would that, would that...
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Okay. In the event that the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services to students?
Just to clarify, you're taking on the word "direct"?
Right.
Keep going.
Alright, so, Chris McFay has suggested this amendment. Is there a second? John, Julio, seconds. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. The second amendment here to have, replace the words "for educational purposes" with "for providing public educational teaching services to students." Is there discussion on the amendment? Yes.
I have a question.
Question.
It was hard to hear you when you started talking at the very beginning. So, what we decide today goes then to the Unified District Board and still has yet to be approved? Is that correct? No, okay.
Chris, up to the microphone.
So, the Romney Board has a meeting scheduled for directly after this meeting. And we'll vote on, basically mirroring the votes here and sign off and basically sign the contract tonight. So, it doesn't go, it would be done here.[1629.94] And if, you know, the unified board would have to challenge what we do here to try and undo it if they wanted to try and do that. But what we do here, the Romney Board, it's going to take up immediately after this meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Any other discussion of this amendment? Michael.
Michael Levine. So Chris, did you have intention K through twelve students or adult students when you made that suggestion? Because right now it's open to any age.
My intention was.
Right here, right here.
Was students who are currently educated in the building now. So it was K through six or were K through more elementary students.
District would be K through twelve.
Right. But I, my intention was.
K through six.
Yeah. But I'm not opposed to K through twelve. If that happened, I mean, I think the goal is that if it's no longer being used for educating students directly, but to use, you know, taking Emily's caution and advisement, if it's not being used for educating students, then that's no longer the educational purpose that we want and it should come back to the town.
Okay. Then the second part of that is, all right, is it about middlesex residents in this building? Or if they decide, middlesex residents should go over to East Montpelier, but Worcester's going to come to this school. Is that in your thinking at all?
It, you know, once the building goes over to the new, new Union District, they could determine to have students from other school, other towns come here and middlesex residents go somewhere else. So the idea is not to say, oh, if middlesex students aren't here, then this clause comes into effect. Because I think that would have to be very specific. It's a broader educational purpose regardless of where the students from in this now United District come from. And he said, I had not thought they'd hope it's just, just middlesex students. I'm not thinking along those lines.
So can I suggest an amendment based on this that rather than, I think it says educating students was the phrase that we say.
Providing public educational teaching services to students.
Right. So we say K through six or K through twelve students. Or pre, no preschool, preschool through.
Pre K through twelve, pre K through six? What's your pleasure?
I'll say pre K through twelve and leave it to the body.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the amendment, which is to add the words pre K through twelve. Is there a second? Uh, okay. Sorry. Okay. So John seconds. So we're discussing whether to add the words pre K through twelve to the amendment. Any discussion on that question?
Kyle, this is Renella. Chris, I have a question for you, John. What do you think would happen if we just deleted the article after the reference to one dollar? Because from the town of Middlesex perspective, we don't want to give up this building at all the grounds. And we would love to buy it back for one dollar on July 2nd.
We can vote it in and see what would happen.
I would say, you know, I don't think that that would, you know, pass. I admire your spirit.
I can't entertain that as a motion right now, Kyle, because we're doing the amendment to the amendment. But if you want to bring it up later, you can. Right now, we're talking about adding the words K twelve to the amendment. Yes.
So another point of clarification. So the point of doing this is that should the unified school district cease to use the building for a purpose we specify, that then the town will have the option to purchase the building, its land, structures, et cetera, for one dollar along with all any other debts associated with it.
Sure.
Okay. But just to clarify, we're talking about a specific condition. We are telling the district, the new unified district, if they no longer meet that specific condition. And right now, we've got the teaching of public pre K through grade twelve students as our specific condition. But if they cease to do that, then we have the first option to purchase the property for a dollar as a town with all of this, whatever else in the law.
And if they cease, if they cease using this building to do that.
Then what?
Then that's, that's the contingency. Yes.
Great.
David.
David Martin. This is a minus one order, mostly all true except for that bit about pre K through twelve. Because that's what's under discussion.
That's what's under discussion.
That was my, thank you. And that was the clarification that the condition that I was clarifying is what we're at issue right now. The use that we are conditioning is public student education grades pre K through twelve.
Providing public educational teaching services to pre K through twelve students is the wording. So right now, we're deciding whether to add pre K through twelve. Are you ready for the question?
I call the question.
You don't call the question, man. You just want to say, yeah, you're ready. Great. Okay. Thank you. Then you don't have to vote on calling the question. Yes.
I just, in this discussion, you know, we want to get this right. Based on that language, does that mean the district would have to be teaching pre K through twelve? Or that any of those grades would qualify? I think we pay attention to any of the grades and not that we require them to have pre grade twelve in the building. So I just want to make sure we word it so that that's.
Response from the lawyer somewhere, or other people's opinions?
So I think it's high.
Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to suggest anything, Chris?
Sure.
From a former education lawyer?
Sure.
I no longer practice. I am no longer an active member of the bar. So we want to clarify that it would be for the direct instruction of pupils, public instruction of pupils from grades pre K through twelve. Would that meet the condition requirement that we want to put forward?
Please, Michael's, Michael's question.
I'm responding through the moderator.
Okay.
So the clarification there is that if I understand Michael's point is that, that educational services pre K through twelve is, is the condition. So right now, we're pre K through six. So is that right?
Yeah.
That's right. So by saying that, we need maybe some qualified, qualified language in there that says educational services that, that, that potentially that, or something.
That serve, that it serves.
That serve within that range.
So just if I already say, I think we're beyond just educational services. It's a little bit more specific than that now, just at your test. And so, I mean, open to language if you're, if you're thinking that if any, like if it's serving twelfth grader, that that would prevent the contingency from being met. What's, what's the concern? Michael.
The concern is that, as John tried to explain. So right now, we are pre K through six in this building. Our language says that unless the district is providing pre K through twelve, we have the option to provide a building. But we're not really asking if it's pre K through twelve. It's just if they're, if they're using it for any body within that range, but not the entire.
Right.
They could decide just fourth grader.
They could, and that, that, right. So.
Public education within the range.
Within the range. And that's, that's fair.
Within the range?
Yeah. Within the range, I think it's.
Is that a normal thing?
Right. Okay. I know. We, this would be amending the amendment to the amendment. So we need to, we could vote this.
Can I accept it as a friendly amendment to my original?
It's okay with me. So, so, and if it were, if we were going to do that, rather than educational teaching services to pre K through twelve students, the wording would be?
Could I suggest the wording?
Yep.
Primary or secondary education?
Between pre K and twelve.
Well, but that's primary through secondary specifically covers all elementary school requests.
Do primary and or secondary students? No. Okay. Within the range of is what we were talking about. To students within the range of pre K through twelve. Does that work for you, Michael?
I, I hope so. I, I actually don't even know at this point what did I language with me. I know what I intended.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I think so. Providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre K through twelve. That's the new amendment we're now discussing.
Does that need a motion or anything?
Um, I think that that was a friendly amendment to Michael's initial amendment, the, the, the pre K through twelve.
Do you have somebody making that?
Somebody, did you have John?
Is that, is that John?
John Lawrence. Yes.
John Lawrence?
Sorry, David Martin, sorry. Hamilton there. Okay. So, yeah, Mary.
Do we need to say something, Michael? Students from the Washington Central District or Unified District is under the law.
Concerns is.
Have public education.
That is a fair point. They're going to, using.
Use the mic, please.
God, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's, that's a fair point. But I also don't know if you'd want to tie the hands of the new union because a lot of, at U thirty-two now, students come from March and other towns. And they provide a source of tuition revenue, which really helps out the, the district as a whole. And so I would anticipate that there might even be more of a push in trying to have students from other towns that are outside of the five towns come to school here. So I, I wouldn't recommend that. Just that, but good thought.
Okay. Kyle.
Again, asking a question, Chris. Wouldn't we put in something saying a majority of which are middlesex residents?
No.
Well, I live, I live right across the street from the school. I want my kids going here. We have to think about what powers this new board is going to have. And one of the powers, they can move our students. They can make my three kids go to another school building. And if we put language in here that says majority of these students need to come from Middlesex, then I would give them big advice before a shift of students to another town.
And so Kyle makes a good point is that the new board, and one of the charges is, is to talk about school choice. There is, you know, probably a little appetite for large transfers of, of students from one town to another, given transportation and things like that. But in an absolute, in terms of an authority, if you're talking about authority, the new board would have the authority that Kyle was talking about. So just, do I think it would happen? No. But we're here today because we want to preserve certain legal interests in the, in the property. And so, so, and so it's a fair point. Fair point. Yeah.
If we, if we had some language that led us in that direction and the inevitability occurred, we'd come together because it's an option. So we'd have that debate at that moment. I don't know that we'd have that debate here necessarily. Right? So that at that point, it says if that, that condition's not met, then we have the option. And I, I assume that if we had the option, we'd come together and talk about that. And we'd say, no, we like the people from Worcester and we like the people from Randolph and we'll bring them all in. And, you know, at that point in time, maybe ten, twenty years down the line. And that's a discussion, I think, an argument to be had for that community at that particular point in time. So that having language like that, I think, doesn't limit us. It just brings us to another discussion point.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So I'm going to bring us back to our process. And we need to make some decisions and we can entertain this motion if we want to, but it can't be an amendment to an amendment to an amendment. It's not allowed under Robert Close. Peter.
I call the question on the amendment, if you remember.
So Peter Hood calls the question on the wording within the range of pre K through twelve. Is there a second on calling the question?
Sorry.
Okay. So we need to. That, you're in. I saw several. So we are now voting on whether to cease discussion on the wording within the range of pre K through twelve. All those in favor of ceasing discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it. We will now vote on adding the words within the range of pre K through twelve to the proposed amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it and we have amended the amendment. We are now discussing the amendment and whether to add this amendment to Article One. And the, and the amendment is at the end of the article. We are saying for one dollar, in the event the property is no longer used for providing educational teaching. Public educational, thank you. Teaching services to students within the range of pre K through twelve. Do we have that? Is there a discussion on this amendment to Article One?
Is this, is the way to word it?
Chris, right.
Perhaps that there are students physically in the building being educated with that wording? Or is it just a risk of education to this range of education? So students.
Would you like me to read it again? That's not a punishment.
You know, Susan, can you read the entire article so we have?
Yes. I'd be glad to read it one. Yeah. Shall the voters of the Middlesex District approve the grant of an option amendment from the Middlesex School District to the Town of Middlesex, which gives the Town of Middlesex the right to purchase the real estate? Sarah, why don't you read it?
Thanks.
The real estate.
It should be, it should be. The real estate.
Real estate. I think it's.
Including buildings.
Real estate buildings, fixtures and site improvements.
Real estate buildings, fixtures. Real estate buildings, fixtures and site improvements.
Okay. Upon which the Romney Elementary School is currently located. From the Middlesex School District or its successors in interest, for the purchase price of one dollar, in the event the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre K through twelve. So I think we're saying that we're going to, we're talking about providing public educational teaching services. Whether it's in the building or not.
That's the.
Yeah.
You're saying when the building no longer used?
In the event that the property is no longer used for. So does that answer your question, Chris? No?
No. I don't know if it's clear, I don't know if it's clear enough that the states, that the students are in the building.
In the event that the property is not, the property being the real estate buildings, fixtures and site improvements. In the event that the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services. Would they be?
The only word that like seemed in the amendment was two students.
Providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre K through twelve. Yeah. All right. Other discussion on this amendment? On the amendment. Are we ready for the question on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We are, great. All those in favor, let's see, the amendment again is at the end is adding the words providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre K through twelve. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The ayes have it and we have amended Article One. But we can amend it more if we want. Or not. Other discussion on Article One or questions?
Cindy Leibman, my question is, we have the option to purchase, but what if they don't want to sell?
They have to sell. They have to prefer to say it. The town, the town would have, the town, not the school district, because the school district's gone. The town has to make a decision whether they want to exercise the option.
Right.
You have.
Peter.
Can I be recognized?
Yes, absolutely.
I do have a question about what we call paragraph five. So, I'm on and on, on and on with it, but, but in paragraph five says, for its part, it is part of consideration for the district where any town now should purchase the subject premise. The town covenants and agrees that the conveyance of the subject premise to the town shall be conditioned upon the town owning and using the subject premises for community civic and public purposes for a minimum of five years. So I'm sitting here thinking, okay, this is a gigantic town clerk's office. It would be, could be an auditorium, could be, who knows what it could be. Cannot be probably senior housing, cannot be.
That's, that's a public purpose. I mean, this is pretty broad language.
Maybe it is.
Community civic or public.
The other problem, I'm, I'm just trying to pick my way through this. So this building is an elementary school right now. It has significant value as an elementary school. To turn this into something else, whatever it is, is going to be tremendously expensive, number one. And number two, the other thing I don't like in this, which I understand why it's in here, but if we buy this building back for a dollar, we're going to assume any outstanding debt that pertains to this building. So, you know, debt is like additional purchase. So I'm just, I'm just sitting here thinking, how feasible is it that the town would ever want to do this? And I realize that's a question for another day, but I think when we're, the terms of this, I just wonder if we're boxing the town in so the town would never agree to buy it back for a dollar because of all these.
At my guess is that language is coming from background Title sixteen education law about because it's paid for with education dollars. There's, I think that does put some restrictions on what it can be used for. And my guess would have bias, it's boxed in that way.
I get all that, but I'm just saying, you know, we're all thinking, oh, wow, this is going to be great. We're going to get this building back. I'm just saying, I'm just saying it might not be so great.
You'd better be willing to change it.
Yeah.
And you now get it as is.
Well, we would definitely get it as is.
Correct.
Presuming it's still an elementary school, all I'm saying is a closed elementary school.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to address my comments to the moderator, and I would just like us to stay on task, because I think that the question is simply, should the town have the option? We're going to go through a legal, a legal document tonight, we're going to be here until four o'clock in the morning. So let's just stick with the, with the question of the board, which is, should we have that option?
Other discussion on Article One. Yes?
I concur, and I also, if you repeated this, a discussion for another day.
Okay.
Did you vote on the amendment?
We voted on the amendment, so we are discussing Article One as amended. Yes.
I recognize that there will be different views on this. I will make a motion to add the language at the end, comma, "the majority of which are Middlesex residents."
"In the event the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre-K through 12, the majority of which are Middlesex students."
Yes. Or residents.
Residents. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the current amended Article One, to add the words, "the majority of which are Middlesex residents." Yes.
Discussion?
Discussion.
So I would encourage us, listening to what Chris was saying earlier, which is accurate in my understanding, that this is not necessarily a good idea because tuition dollars that come into a community, into a school district, with students who come from other towns, other school districts, make a significant impact in a good direction for the residents of the district where the students are coming in, into which the students are coming. So it would look very protectionist for us to put language like that in our, in our option agreement, whatever, to the new unified board, and it could ultimately be more harmful than good to put it in versus leaving that language out. Something to consider. There are certainly a lot of students in our community in the school right now. We probably have at least one student that comes in from another community, and we don't know what tomorrow looks like. So I think it would behoove us to be very cautious about the protectionist language, understanding we all love this, it's our community school, and there are wise reasons not to do that.
Other discussion on the proposed amendment, Jeff.
I also, I don't think that even by putting that language in, doesn't necessarily say that the new district can't take some of the Middlesex residents out. So I think it's something to put in there that's more potentially harmful and doesn't necessarily guarantee that Middlesex residents are going to go to school here, which is the end goal. But the reality is that, that this, the cost of transporting other than high school people to another school is prohibitive and probably would not necessitate Middlesex residents or Middlesex students going to East Montpelier or Berland or wherever.
Other discussion on the amendment. Sandy Leibman.
Sandy Leibman, I understand the intent or the desire, I think it's great to have Middlesex students educated within Middlesex. I would, I am encouraged voting against the amendment, because I think it ties the hands too much of the future board that will be responsible for educating all of the children in the district and not just the children of Middlesex. They might want to reconfigure schools in some ways, and it feels very protectionist, protectionist in a way that excludes education, potentially excludes educational services to a broader cross-section of the students in our, in our district. And also, it may backfire. It might instead provide an incentive to close the school. If we can only educate Middlesex students here and maybe not combine them with Worcester or some other areas, then we'll just close the school, and then all of Middlesex students would be having to go somewhere else. So I would urge voting against it.
This, Kyle, I call it that, I specifically said the majority of which, we could have students from other towns coming here. And there's a reference to tying the hands of the future board. That is why I'm proposing this. I want, and to actually think long and hard about reconfiguring the schools before they do it. And I think a provision like this would give them a lot more pause, and I, I mean, I just can't imagine having a conversation with my six-year-old that, instead of walking across the street to the school that he has gone, he has seen from our window and gone to for years, we're taking him to a new place. And I want to give that new board, which we don't want to even exist, two-thirds of Middlesex oppose this merger, I want them to think long and hard before they make a decision like that affecting my kids and the other kids who go to this school.
Other discussion on the proposed amendment. Are we ready for the question? Chris? Chris, microphone.
You're also going to feel like the audience, no one else has a microphone.
Chris, you're like...
I've never heard that before.
[laughing]
You know, Kyle makes a good point. He said, "If there's going to be provision like this, it has to happen now, otherwise the opportunity to put it in is lost." And it would probably give the new board pause. I, you know, I just couldn't envision more than, you know, we have about 180 students here now, 170, and when Kyle says a majority, that's, you know, half plus one. That's still a lot of students from other places that could come here. And so it's, it's an option, and I think Sandy's right, that could have some negative consequences as well. And Kyle, even if we had that, there's no guarantee that your, your child would still come here if there was going to be shifting around, because they wouldn't be treated any different than anyone else in terms of who, what student was sent where. But it is, it is something to seriously consider because of just the implications of it. And again, I do think it would tie the new board's hands, maybe not in a negative way. Notice some thoughts.
Thanks. And if anyone else has a really quiet voice and wants to use a microphone, you're welcome to do that. I didn't mean to give Chris special mumbling privileges. Yes.
Jason, not Patrick. I, I don't think I'm, yeah, I really like these comedians because I hear lots of good perspectives, and it makes me think really hard. And I don't think I'm in favor of the amendment as is, but I think I agree very much with the intent of it. I wonder if collectively we might be able to come up with a way to rephrase it, not staying here till 4:00 AM. But I think the core of the concern is about students being compelled to go somewhere else. If the worst, schools start getting mixed around, and some students want to go somewhere else, great. If there's a large, the students who's being compelled to go somewhere else, I think that's the large concern here. And so I don't have the exact bridge in my head, I'm sorry, but if it could be rephrased to say that we can exercise the option if students, Middlesex students are being compelled to go somewhere else, I wonder if that might get at the concern without...
I'm, I am concerned about germaneness. It's one of those things that moderators are trained in. Eventually, an article becomes not the same meaning as the article that was proposed, and we can't pass articles that weren't warned. And eventually, we start to say, people say, wait, this is what happened at the meeting? I didn't, I read the agenda and I didn't think that was on the agenda. And my concern is, we may have reached our limit in terms of germaneness. Sarah, did you have a comment?
I was actually just going to back up on that, because we're getting really far afield, and I'm just worried that we're going to create something that won't be... Exactly what you said.
You know, eventually, it doesn't actually hold up if it's challenged. Yes?
A suggestion, and it was where I was thinking too, both of you guys were all in the same wavelength. Perhaps a strong advisory letter from our school board with such language would be helpful to the new unified district board, should they face a situation like that. Maybe the way to go, that certainly happens in other statutory, regulatory, and legal contexts, where advisory language can be useful in decision-making for future bodies or other bodies.
So this would be a non-binding decision by this group, since it's not warned. But what you're suggesting from the floor is that the school board, while it still exists in the next two days, compose a letter that suggests...
I'm just summarizing the concerns of our community about the children of our community being shipped to other schools, and our school building being used for purposes other than educating children between pre-K and 12, public education. We are from, from Middlesex and Rock. We've got the part in our amendment already, but we just hammer it home in an advisory.
So just for the purposes of time, what I'm going to suggest is that we take a straw poll, this is a sense of the room, there's nothing binding about this, about the suggestion that, that, sorry, what's your name?
Amy White.
That Amy just made. If you think that, yes?
They're asking to corollary to that, but maybe that's taken up at the right school board meeting.
Yes. Yeah, it's a suggestion from this room. I was really hoping for a straw poll, guys.
Well, I, in that context, I just want to say, we haven't taken a vote, so I'm not sure that the board really could say in the letter, the consensus of the town is. They could speak as the board.
They can speak as the board, and they can speak as the board, knowing that, that they heard from the public who were concerned about if they showed up. Yeah.
I appreciate the idea. I am going to insist we do have a vote on this pending, because I, again, this is a legal process, and this actually means something if we put it in here. But I don't want to keep people here a long time. I do just want to mention, because Sandy had mentioned that this may be more likely that our school could close. As of Tuesday, we do have an amended article that protects us from that, that we actually get a vote on that if they're going to close our schools. And I also just want to remind everyone, again, this is the option. So if this merge board says, hey, we've got to make this the middle school, that's the only way it's going to work. They can make their case to us, and we can choose not to exercise this option. Say, fine, keep the building, use it as a middle school. But I want them to make their case to us before they take the bid away from the school.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest is that we put off the straw poll until we vote on the article, and then we will, we'll come back to that. So right now, what we're voting on is the amendment to add "the majority of which are Middlesex residents" to Article One. Are we ready for that question? All those in favor of...
Sorry.
Yes?
Can you just read the, I'm not really sure what I'm voting on.
Sure, okay. Article One, where, this would be the amended version of Article One. Shall the voters of Middlesex, the Middlesex District approve the grant of an option agreement from the Middlesex School District to the Town of Middlesex, which gives the Town of Middlesex the right to purchase the real estate, buildings, fixtures, and site improvements upon which the Romy Elementary School is currently located, from the Middlesex School District or its successors in interest, for the purchase price of $1, in the event the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre-K through 12, the majority of which are Middlesex residents. So right now, we're voting on whether to add the words "the majority of which are Middlesex residents." All those in favor of adding the words "the majority of which are Middlesex residents", please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
The noes have it, and the amendment fails. I'm now going to ask for, so what we're talking about is Article One, as we amended it a while back, and I'm just going to ask for a straw poll on whether you think it's a good idea for the school board to compose a letter after this meeting, reflecting concerns about Middlesex residents.
Susan, I have a question. We didn't have a warned agenda, I guess, and that's not our agenda.
We can, we can, we can, we can discuss that.
It's a discussion.
But you can't, you can discuss it, but you can't vote on great, I'm doing it. And you haven't had 48 more hours to eat. So you need to vote, you can discuss, you can discuss anything.
Right.
But you can't vote on...
So you don't think that your board could actually act on this, even if this straw poll's warned? Your board can't take action at this point?
We should take the straw poll.
You want the straw poll anyway. The board chair asks for the straw poll. Are you ready to vote yes or no on the straw poll?
What's the question?
Sorry, you're going to say that. Shall the school board write a letter reflecting the sentiment of this, of this, of this meeting, reflecting the sentiment of the school board regarding concerns about moving Middlesex students outside of Middlesex? Is that okay?
We're having, we're having, yeah. But the, the idea is, the question of moving too many Middlesex students outside of Middlesex. Yeah.
I think it's fine, but I think it should reflect that the vote, the vote that was taken, which was discussed, there was concern, and it was defeated, but there was, you know, there was a discussion about it.
Okay, great. All those in favor of such a letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
All those in, I'm going to do this again. All those in favor, raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry, there was, yeah, okay. So if this is opposed, the motion, such as it is, passes. It's not really a motion, it's a straw poll. It's a straw poll, it is non-binding. The school board is under obligation to do nothing. It was a sense of the meeting. All right. We now have Article One, and it's amended, and unless we want to amend it more, we can vote on Article One as amended. Peter?
I'm sorry about this, folks, and I'm hungry and tired too. I'd like to know, Chris, where paragraph five came from in this option agreement. This, this entire paragraph, to me, is detrimental to the town's interests, and I don't know why we even have an amendment.
The thing is, we, we aren't voting on that option agreement. That, that's not like part of our ability to change tonight. So it is, it's important to know it so you can vote yes or no on, on whether we're going to include it, but we aren't, we can't change it tonight. It's not part of the warning.
And we're stuck with this option, we're going to have to...
Chris, can you...
I did, yeah. These documents, counties, the town councils took the first step toward making this illegal, preserving the legal rights to an option like this. And so we basically cribbed up their documents, modified them for Middlesex. And so this language came from, Scott Cameron's the attorney that did the work for us. So Peter, too, I can't tell you where the origin of this language came from. But I think Kyle was right, that if, if there's been educational money used for buildings, and the school is no longer used as an educational facility, and the town buys it, there is this five-year, we can't just like turn it around and sell it to someone else.
I, I understand clearly what it says. My front question is, if we approve this article, will we get this language or we can't amend it?
Yes.
It's a best thing for it to be legal, I'm sorry.
It's, it's an option. Yeah, it has to be an option.
Yeah, and I'm not, I, I am not 100% sure, but my understanding, as moderator, that's the way I would rule, is...
the way I would rule, is that what we're voting on here is the article and not the, the attachment that it refers to. So I don't think we can amend the legal, but I, if other, you are totally willing to overrule me.
It is the town of Calis and the town of middlesex just serves by putting this in. That's just a comment.
Mary.
So we, this agreement, is this the same agreement that the other four towns or the five towns in...
What else? Berlin, Calis.
Are you all doing the same kind of...
Berlin and Calis are Doughty, Worcester, and East Montpelier have chosen not to. They're not going to. And, and from what I understand, East Montpelier, Berlin, and Worcester thought they did not need it because it's the default article, it's part of the default articles. And my concern is that the default articles can be amended. And, you know, mending to the article that's there could be amended even though it's been adopted. So.
So we're going to vote, we're going to pass the, my daughter, either amended or not amended?
No.
No.
No, because it's because...
Because our school board is approving this.
Right.
That's right.
We have a specific agreement, that's, that's what we're working on.
Yes.
The point of the article that we're voting on is to have an option. We have to specify the option when we send the information to the new unified district board. This is the option that we have in front of us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So if we want to have an option to exercise, we're holding it currently. And this is the model that Calis used, correct? And the language that's in here in Paragraph Five does look like language with, with, of which I am somewhat familiar with ancient times when I was in practice. I cannot confirm any of this information, but I will say, for what it's worth, that there are very strict statutes and regulations around what can happen with school property that has been paid for with school education funding and including time after the school ceases to be a school. So for what it's worth, that's my resident opinion. And this, if we are ever going to have an option, it would appear to be the one we have in our hands tonight to consider that we're, that we're actually voting. Otherwise, our, our, the article that we're voting on is moved because there's no option to go with it otherwise. Correct?
That is correct, then, but then the, the option that would be available to the town would be in the default articles provided it is never amended. So there is a backup and I, I just wanted to talk about that.
And that, that would put in further in the hands of the new unified district board to define the terms of the option we would potentially have.
I think the language might be the same, statute totally, but it is, in terms of the town having first right of refusal, yes, I agree with that, right.
So we are discussing whether to pass Article One as amended. Are we ready for the question? Yes, I think we are. All right. I'll read it one more time. Shall the voters of the middlesex district approve the grant of an option agreement from the middlesex school district to the town of middlesex, which gives the town of middlesex the right to purchase the real estate, buildings, fixtures, site improvements upon which the Romy Elementary School is currently located, from the middlesex school district or its successors and interests, for the purchase price of $1. In the event the property is no longer used for providing public educational teaching services to students within the range of pre-K through 12. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it and Article One as amended has passed. Did you have a question in the back, Patrick? Sorry, did you have a question?
Totally, but my question could be like, I just, I just assume we could exercise this option more than once, right? If over the years, this issue came up more than one time, we'd be able to exercise the option each time. Does anybody know?
I don't know the answer to that, but I suspect that if we don't exercise it the first time, then the unified district has the power to sell it to someone else. And so it's basically right of first, right of first refusal is what we're, we've just voted on. So I suspect we get one chance and not more than one because the property can then be sold to someone else.
Thanks, folks. Article Two, shall the voters of the middlesex school district approve the grant of an easement from the middlesex school district to the town of middlesex, this is going to sound a little familiar, which gives the town of middlesex the right in perpetuity to use the real estate and buildings owned by the middlesex school district or its successors and interests for certain public purposes as specified in the easement deed. Is there a motion on Article Two? Jeff Koons moves, is there a second? Article Two has been moved and seconded. Are there questions? Would you like to hear Chris hold forth on Article Two? Jeff, did you have a question?
Well, I was, I meant to mirror the grounds and that, et cetera.
Real estate, buildings, fixtures, and site improvements?
Same language, just in this article.
Okay, so there is a motion to amend Article Two to reflect the parallel wording to Article One, where it says...
Real estate, buildings.
Right, in perpetu- to, in perpetuity to use real estate, buildings, fixtures, and site improvements owned by the middlesex school district. Jeff Koons, that's, that's a, and it's seconded by Kyle, and it's Maranello. Is there discussion on this amendment to make the two rulings? You ready to vote on that amendment? All those in favor of amending Article Two to add the words fixtures and site improvements? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Other discuss, that's passed. Other discussion on Article Two as amended? Do you have any comments you want to make?
So this, of the two articles, this is the one that is more important because there is no language in the default articles about maintaining community access other than through what the unified board would permit. And so this, what this does is maintains middlesex community access by right as opposed to grace. And, you know, it's kind of gets us the town meeting here, emergency shelter if we needed, access to the gymnasium, and, and the rules for community activities and meetings and things along those lines that are, that are in these. And so it creates a community right to use the property as opposed to asking permission. Doesn't mean that there can't be policies that, you know, in, in terms of filling out forms for use, but it's a right as opposed to a granted, asking permission.
This is, this second one is assuming that it isn't sold, that, that this, this is while it's still in use by Washington Central.
It's in perpetuity.
In perpetuity. But it's either, yeah, either, yeah, okay. Yes.
So it didn't last, just a, a question then, just so, who takes responsibility for enforcing that, right? As you said, there might be like forms to fill out, I totally get that, but I'm just, who, who would we imagine is the authority then for...
I expect that would be the principal's office again, but it'd be the principal's office. But there, there could be policy development about use of the building, so which I'm sure each community now has a building use policy and I assume the new board would just adopt those, but...
I'm referring to the policy vote, which then would be under the authority of the W. Guss and implemented by way of...
Yes.
Further discussion on Article Two, yeah.
Do they have to accept this, the unified board? Because you're asking for an easement, which they do not have to grant.
Well, actually, this, since the property is still owned by the middlesex school district, we're granting the easement to the town. And so they don't, you know, they don't own the property and we still have rights in the property and can make these changes ourselves. For, well, we have two more days. Doesn't only last two days, but we're acting within our property, our rights as property owners to do this.
So we, as a town, own the building and property?
The school district does.
That's correct. Therefore, they, right, without, they don't need to approve this easement.
No, no, we are approving it.
But they, you've given it to them.
No, no, no.
When you do, if they take it out.
And we pass this easement and then board ratifies it, the existing board, then the building that's conveyed subject to this easement.
So it goes with the building.
Who's going to approve that easement?
Romy Board.
The Romy Board will tonight at a meeting.
They're going to do it as soon as this meeting is over.
But they lose that power when...
But, but once we've done, once we've taken that step, it goes with the land, so it's incorporated into...
It goes in the deed, therefore they have to accept it.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, it's just, as most of the time, when it's on, it's a special deed, therefore it's subject to the owner of the property. Okay.
Does easement survive if the building, if the town didn't exercise an option and the building were passed to somebody who wanted to create a senior staff?
I believe it would because it's in perpetuity, which means forever. And I think what would potentially happen is if the building was passed to some other entity and they wanted to buy it, they might negotiate with the town. And that would come up then. So will it survive, is my opinion.
Other discussion of Article Two is... I think you might be ready for the question. Article Two, shall the voters of the middlesex school district approve the grant of an easement from the middlesex school district to the town of middlesex, which gives the town of middlesex the right in perpetuity to use the real estate and buildings, fixtures, and site improvements owned by the middlesex school district or its successors and interests for certain public purposes as specified in the easement deed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it and Article Two as amended is passed.
Did we pass the amendment?
We did. We did. Yes. So unless there's other comments or discussion, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this one last meeting of the Romy School District. Middlesex Town School District. Thank you for coming.